It's 7:00 PM on Wednesday, October 18th, and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting's order. I'm Sarah Melo, she's the chair. I have with me Sean Zahn to my right and Catherine Howe. To my left is Brian Solacey and Rob Scott. We will start with the application of Calvin properties. I will open the public hearing on the application of Calvin properties LLC for a modification of conditions one and five under a variance granted on January 23rd, 2001, Book 16, 859, page 203, under section 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and other relief that may be necessary to remove 42 trailers, 15 containers, construct the 13,400 square foot storage building, alter the parking and extend the driveway at One Beaver Dam Road, assessors map number 37, lot number three in the limited commercial district filed with the town clerk on September 11th, 2023. Mr. Crocker, you're going to present for the applicant?
I will. I'm here tonight with the applicant, Jim Brady, who's the manager of Calvin Properties, and Taylor Dowdy from BSC, the engineering group Houston Worthington. And I would start by saying that, as you pointed out, the property is located in the limited commercial district. It's a 6.8 acre site. It is bounded on the south and the east by property of Old Corey LLC, which is essentially cell signaling, and on the west and the north by property of the trustees of reservations. As you can see from the site plan that's on the easel and the plans in front of you, there are multiple buildings and multiple trailers and containers on the site at the moment. And what we're proposing to do tonight is something that was reviewed by the conservation commission a couple of years ago and hasn't been acted on. Well, Tim was trying to refine the plans. We're now refined and what he's proposing to do, as you just said, is remove 42 eight-foot by 53-foot trailers, 12 eight-foot by 40 containers, three eight-foot by 20 containers. And those containers have a total lot coverage of 22,128 square feet. The area of those containers, for the most part, which is on the west side of the site, adjacent to property of the trustees of reservations, those are all located essentially within a wetlands buffer zone. And so, as we'll explain, the plan is to remove all those trailers and these trailers. And the proposed building that's going to house that stuff is going to go right here. It's going to have a lower profile than the existing building, and it's going to be three stories, notwithstanding the fact that the town now allows 55-foot buildings in the limited commercial district. The building will have the footprint that you just described, 13,400. It will almost be a rectangle, 93 by 150, but one corner of the building is sort of slightly dark. The result of the removal of the containers and the construction of the new building is the reduction of lot coverage by 8,728 square feet. And what Taylor has done, that the plant, site plan that was filed with the application had one minor discrepancy in it, and so we're replacing that page and Taylor can explain what that is.
Yeah, it's just, it's simply wording in the zoning, in the zoning table. We ended up modifying the language to match the zoning code in block three and the block at the bottom. That's the time was. The modification is going to be block number three right here and the bottom one.
And the modifications that Taylor just referred to are the lot coverage. The declarations or changes that Taylor just referred to are the lot coverage calculations. And there are two that are included. One is coverage by buildings and accessory structures, which is limited to 40%. And at the moment, the coverage by buildings and accessory structures on the site is 21.59 or 63,128 square feet. And we're proposing to reduce that to 55,400 or 18.66%. With respect to its imperious surfaces, the maximum is 60%. The property at the moment exceeds that. There's 238,407 square feet of imperious surface, which is 80% of the site. We're proposing to reduce that 65%, close to the maximum, but not quite there, 193,023 square feet. As I mentioned, the conservation commission did review the project and issued an order of conditions that allowed for the removal of the storage containers and trailers, the installation of the tumulus driveway extension, which is right here. It gets us to the back of the building. And so this is the area that's going to be returned to natural state. This is the new tumulus. They also required as part of their decision that that area where the trailers are being removed will be returned to its natural vegetative state using native plantings. And that's what is being proposed. The 2001 decision of the zoning board had several conditions, as your chairman just mentioned, dealing with trailers and containers and changes in the plan that required the applicants to come back to the zoning board. So that's why we're calling this a modification. We're doing what that condition requires. Additionally, your chairman suggested that the project may, in fact, also require a special permit because we are modifying a non-conformity properties. If that were the case, the finding is relatively straightforward. You need to determine that what you're proposing won't be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhoods than the existing conditions. What we are suggesting is that what we're proposing is consistent with the purposes of the zoning bylaw. In particular, those items that are, I've bulleted, are encouraging the most appropriate use of the property, preventing light and pollution of the environment, conserving the value of land and buildings, and implementing recommendations of the master plan. And the master plan, as I suspect you know, was the 2019 master plan that encouraged the town to increase revenue through planned development in the limited commercial district. What we're proposing is certainly going to enhance the value of Mr. Brady's property. The new building is going to be taxed at a significantly greater amount than the property at the moment. And the master plan also encouraged the protection and preservation of the town's natural resources. And I think what he's doing is trying to clean up the property to respect, better respect the wetlands. He's met with the trustees of reservations. He discussed the project with them before the conservation commission acted. He's been in touch with them again. And I do believe he's had contact with representatives of cell signaling, and they may have, Michael Combe may have sent an email. So we're here to answer any questions you have about the engineering or the use of the property, all three of us, and any other issues or concerns you might have.
Rob, do you have any questions?
As far as the flat roof, what do you guys propose to do about drainage, keeping it out of the wetlands?
So like Attorney Glocks, he said earlier, we have already visited the conservation commission in 2021, I believe it was. We do have an order, a valid order of conditions. The roof drains, but not mistaken, are spilling out onto the pavement. And the key is, this is really the big sell here, is that we're removing over an acre in this area of basically pavement and rubble, you know, kind of crushed stone that's not, doesn't have a good high value in terms of drainage running off over that and then bringing it all the pollutants into the wetland. And we're replacing it, like Attorney Glocks, he said, with, you know, native plantings, native species. There's been some talk about potential pollinator type stuff that's going on there. And that, that in itself would have a natural way of cleaning the water a lot better than flush pavement and dilapidated.
Right. And you adding these parking areas?
There is, I mean, we are, there is existing, and I do want to note that that's already existing imperious surface there. We're kind of memorializing it at that location and saying, yes, we're going to strike out.
Like you might want to.
Yeah. The area of questions should right here. So this is the actual edge of existing pavement is on the far side of that, and we're pulling it back, we're pulling it in, re-stripping spaces here.
I mean, we know we're going to get rid of the trailers, we're going to have a building. There's obviously going to be more people entering the building than there would be a trailer. So you, we need to provide parking, and because people are going to be entering the building, do we have to worry about snow removal? And where is the snow going to be pushed to? And I assume it's going to be the wetlands. So where would that go?
That's correct. I don't want to speak for Tim, but I think you would want to push it elsewhere on site. You're not necessarily going to pile it straight into the wetlands. I think that's required by the conservation commission. I'd have to look at the order of conditions that I want to serve that. That's a requirement in state anyway. And I know we have a snow removal plan that included at the time. I just don't have it on me. But generally speaking, you're correct. You need to push it away from the wetlands, down into other areas, keep it out of the buffer zone, generally speaking. So that's what.
Is there a plan in place for that?
There is a plan in place. I just don't have it on me.
And the new street that's going to be put in, the new roadway, is that takes quite a, quite a sharp turn. Is there been an investigation to know if it allows for fire department access? We know, can we get a fire strike in, down across that in case of an emergency?
Yes, we can. I, I don't have it on, again, I don't have it on me, but I know the fire restricted fire apparatus could make that turn. It could turn around up here where, where all of this is mostly existing pavement also, in addition to these trailers that are there now. And that's simply all we're doing here, is basically connecting point A to point B to make a cohesive path around the site.
The building itself, is it going to have a fire suppression system, standpipe system? Is there a fire hydrant already existence that the fire department could hook up to, to service the building?
So onsite, we don't have town water or town sewer. So we have a cistern-based system, underground, 24,000 gallon cistern-based system with a fire pump already in place for another building. So we're going to use that as our cisterns.
So you're going to have the same system, but a separate fire pump for the building?
No, you can use the same fire pump. You just have to tee off that fire pump.
Do you, have you gone through the hydraulic calculations to make sure that can cover that?
Well done. And that's been, good to go. That's been done. Yep. Fire, Excel fire suppression out of somewhere in New Hampshire. They, yeah, it's good to go.
So it's, the fire pumps is new standpipe. It's a dry standpipe system at all?
You know, honestly, I don't know what that means. It's just, it's a, it's a couple of year old fire pump that's.
It's, I mean, is it a heated building or?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a wet system.
So it's a wet system, so it's going to be in, don't have to worry about freezing?
No, definitely not going to freeze, no.
Because I guess that's where I was going with it.
Absolutely, yeah. Building itself is thriving.
What's that?
Well, because I want to hear what he has to say. The building itself is thriving control. So it's heated air conditioned, dehumidified, highest level of storage. Just inherently speaking, the sprinklers will be wet, won't freeze.
So the power goes up as backup generator?
If the, you know. There is, there's no backup generator in the building.
Okay, so if the power went out with the fire pump still working, or could it possibly freeze?
So the fire pump itself, I don't think you're allowed to put a backup generator on it. It has its dedicated main for that fire pump.
Yeah, but for the building itself, like, hold the gen heat back on and keep the pipes from freezing?
Right, yeah. No, we don't have a backup generator on any of the storage rooms up there as stands, and we haven't looked into doing a backup generator system. The buildings themselves are like, you know, they, they stay warm, even in the coldest temperatures, they stay very warm for a long time. It'd take a lot of time to, to wipe out that freezing temperatures. But yeah, that's certainly something we could look at, just as a part of the design plan.
I know you have the existing buildings probably been there forever, so.
Yeah.
This is a new building, so we want to make sure that it's compliant with required safety devices. And again, we don't want the wet system to freeze unless you go to a dry system, then, you know, you have to have a fire hydrant put in, but.
Yeah, so I just built the building 2016, 24,000, because we were required at the time to do a backup generator. We just, we did a fire pump cistern, HVAC dehumidification. We discussed the backup generators.
Good idea, though. In 2016, would you use a place?
Yeah, it's wet system, another climate controlled building. That's, that's.
So generally, the heat's going to be on, but it does go on, it's going to be back on within 24 hours.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's also a, yeah, it's a gas-based system, so it would need the, the air handlers to work to heat the building. It's something we can look at. You know, it's not, I don't know if it's something that we've talked about here, but certainly, yeah, it's a good idea for sure.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is just, you know, fire department access and.
Yeah.
And keeping the fire suppression up and running. Obviously, if it's wet and it's cold when it freezes, then something.
Yeah, I've been there. I've been there a lot of buildings, yeah.
Yeah, it's a dry system, you don't have to worry about it.
Yep. All right. Then the seals dry out, though, and all the pipes over a few years, and they start to leak air. Pressurize all the time.
You have to be able to test it.
Yes, you're right.
And you get that tag when the building's supposed to go to.
Absolutely.
Good enough.
Okay. Is that it?
So I have right now.
Okay. Brian?
Hey, you asked me to be on the. If you weren't expecting me to come up with these kinds of questions.
I didn't want to actually do anything. I just wanted you to sit there.
And that, I'm done.
You don't have any questions?
No, I think that he's answered every question I have, and then some.
Hey, what are you using for a fire alarm?
My God. I could go in with you.
I'll sweep that to the fire department.
Let's not overshoot our headlights here.
Catherine, you're going to skip, right?
I.
Okay.
You weren't prepared.
Well, I can be prepared, sure.
So I know that you got this order of conditions in 2001, right? Or 2021, January 2021? So it's going to expire January of this year, right? Do you anticipate going?
It'll need to be extended.
Back? Do you anticipate any problems with the extension?
Shouldn't we?
I don't, the Wetland Protection Act has not changed.
And you haven't changed your design?
Absolutely not.
So, okay. It's kind of just wanted to check on that. What?
So the approval would be conditioned on the.
No.
No?
Well, no, I was just wondering.
We can't condition our decision on approval by any other department or board.
No, I just wanted to clarify where, as we're standing.
If, if, if that were to expire and it weren't reinstated within the one year that they have for a variance, then they'd have to come back and force.
I think they're all, they're, it sounds true. And is there, it doesn't really matter. I'm just wondering why you've gotten all these permits, but you've not actually done the activity for years and years? Just because?
Oh, no, the activity's been done. Actually, you're asking why the CONCON approved the project in 2021 and nothing's happened since?
Well, actually, I was just looking at the board, the original decision from 2001, and then the CONCON from 2021, and I was kind of trying to trace. I might, I mean, you're missing something, but I was trying to trace what happened.
Oh, well.
Because it's 20 years.
Explain the history of the property. And there were two other occasions when he and his father came before this board for special permits to make other modifications of that property.
Okay.
And it's it's, it's been Tim's life project, so.
This has been kind of ongoing.
Place up over time. I still have another, you know, like, kind of another phase.
It's like iteration.
The upper process, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I can understand.
Tim's father was the one who started this project. And he had a different approach to the world than Tim does.
Got it. I can totally understand that.
That, that, forgiveness? No, no, he just didn't see things the way Tim sees them.
Sure, yeah. Came from a different time, World War II and the Depression, so.
Anything else? I don't have any other questions at this time. Sean?
The only question I just wanted to confirm on your plans here, it says a three-story building? That was correct, okay.
Yeah, I certainly feel that building a new storage building is certainly preferable to having all those trailers on site. And certainly, when we're at the site, is that the other buildings that are there look nice, so I presume this isn't the same.
The, the most recent one is the one that was approved by this board as you're coming in to Beaver Dam Road on the right, the pre-standing building.
The one I almost drove into.
Oh, I don't know, but, but, but that, that's like this project will be, it'll be a little nicer than that one, but similar to that one.
Um, so on we did receive an email dated October 17th, 2023, from Michael Combe, owner of the adjacent property, Old Corey's LLC, supporting the proposed project. At this point, I will ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this application. Is there anybody in the room that wishes to be heard on it?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, my Chris Combe.
Your name and address?
Is 29 Proctor Street in Manchester.
Okay.
I'm here representing Cell Signaling Technologies as well. And we're, we're definitely in support of Tim's project. And I know that it will be a major improvement for, you know, for all stakeholders, including the environment, so. And also, Tim's a great guy, so I know it's going to be a good project.
Thank you very much. I did notice on the application we received for cell signaling that its building is overlooking Mr. Brady's property.
Yes, you can, you can see it quite clearly.
Well, luckily, it'll be, we're getting rid of good, probably almost half of what they see with getting rid of those containers where they're located, so.
Does anybody on the board have anything else? Ready for me to make a motion? I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Calvin Properties LLC to modify conditions one and five of the variance granted on January 23rd, 2001, Book 16, 859, page 203, under section 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to remove 42 eight-foot by 53-foot trailers, 12 eight-foot by 40-foot containers and three eight-foot by 20-foot containers, construct a 13,400 square foot storage building, three stories high, to replace the 57 trailers and containers being removed, alter the parking and extend the driveway at One Beaver Dam Road, assessors map number 37, lot number three in the limited commercial district filed with the town clerk on September 11th, 2023. Based on a finding, the proposed 13,400 square foot storage building in removal of the 57 trailers and containers will significantly improve the property and owing to circumstances related to the shape and topography of the lands, especially affecting such land and structures, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw based on the following conditions. Forty-two eight-foot by 53, 53 feet trailers, 12 eight-foot by 40-foot containers and three eight-foot by 20-foot containers shall be removed as depicted on the plans prepared by BSC Group dated March 8th, 2023, V100 existing conditions and C101 layout and materials plan updated October 18th, 2023. The 13,400 square foot building shall be cited as depicted on C101 layout and material plans prepared by BSC Group dated March 8th, 2023, updated October 18th, 2023. And its construction shall be substantially consistent with the architectural dash A self-storage plan prepared by Star Building Systems dated January 18th, 2023. The additional parking spaces and extension of the driveway shall be constructed and cited as depicted on C101 layout and materials plan prepared by BSC Group dated March 8th, 2023 and updated October 18th, 2023. Do I have a second? Second. Catherine's second. Any discussion? You ready to vote? Rob?
Great.
Ryan? Catherine? Sean? And Sarah, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you all so much.
I can write it who wants to review it.
All right.
Sean will be. So you're all set, and you know the variance will expire in one year?
Yes.
If you don't start.
Hopefully, you can get a shovel on the ground.
Daniel backup generator. It's a good call.
It is a good call. I wish I had one in my house. Power goes out a lot.
I agree. I know. It's good. You guys are going to take it.
Yeah. We have one in the other room.
This is slab foundation?
Yep.
So the CMU's.
Exactly. CMU voice wheels in the first. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Get some rest, hurt November.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to the application of Dana Shell at Three Anthony Lane. I will open the public hearing for the application of Dana Shell for a special permit under sections 5.3 and 12.5 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to add a second story on an existing residential structure which encroaches one foot into the front setback and a variance under sections 5.3 and 12.3.3 of the zoning bylaw and other relief as may be necessary to allow the construction of a deck which encroaches approximately 10 feet into the side setback at Three Anthony Avenue, assessors map number 32, lot number 80, District A, filed with the town clerk on September 19th, 2020. Mr. Crocker, are you going to present?
Yes, Andrew Crocker with SB Design represented the applicant. And we've designed an addition for Michelle at her residence at Three Anthony Ave. And the addition is a second story addition to a one-story house with a walkout basement. The building meets, the building and the addition meets all zoning requirements with the exception of the fact that the building, the existing building was built one foot into the setback. So we are asking for a special permit to allow us to intensify that non-conformity. The building will extend 35, 34 feet from the lowest point.
Uh, the building will, uh, extend thirty-five, thirty-four feet from the lowest point. The property itself is a very narrow lot that extends back three hundred and eighty feet. Um, the building is, uh, sited to the front of the lot because behind is a large ledge, um, that makes the property have very limited area to build, uh, building, uh, to begin with, and to add any sort of additional space, um, is very difficult. Therefore, we're proposing the addition on top of the existing structure. Along those same lines, um, the amount of outdoor space is limited on the property. The only usable outdoor space, um, currently is a small deck that runs behind the house. There's a small front yard, um, that's taken up mostly by a driveway, um. So we're also proposing to add a deck on the left-hand side of the property that would extend ten feet into the side setback. Um, so that, that, if you see the, the floor plan, the side that we're proposing, the deck is where the existing kitchen and dining area are. On the other side of the house is bedrooms, which makes it not conducive for outdoor space access. So we're really kind of hemmed in with the property. The site is clearly an issue with the, the ledge at the back and the narrowness of the site. Um, and, uh, we don't think that the deck will impact on the neighbors because they're so far away and it's a very wood, wooded site. So we're asking for a variance of the deck.
Have you spoken to the neighbors on that side?
Haven't you? They actually just moved in. There's been a lot of turnover on the river, so now I have not spoken to them about.
As I recall, there were trees on the lot line.
Yes.
Catherine, you have any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. So long, you know. Ryan?
No, I think that it's straightforward, uh.
Sean?
Not the last.
Yeah. Rob?
What are the rooms gonna use for?
Uh, there'll be three bedrooms on the first floor, uh, living room, dining room, and office, and then additional bedroom on the first floor after.
But, uh, in, in the addition, what?
It'll be a master bedroom suite and then two additional bedrooms.
So you're adding a bedroom. Top one, right. So you know you have to hardwire on the front. Yes, absolutely. Did you know that? You just.
No, e- every, every addition, every building we do is hardwired, you know, CO detectors.
I mean, not that wrong, it's a whole, the whole house.
Oh, yeah, yes, I guess, sure.
Is that it, Rob?
So I know we were there the other day and the ground, the grade slopes forward, uh, do you guys happen to know what the depth of the foundation is in the front? I know, and the back is certainly forward.
I would assume that the foundation goes down below the frost line, which is four feet.
Yeah, I would check on that. I just with the increased weight and just from having seen issues myself, for some of my things to do where, that's all. As far as the design, I think it's, it's good.
Just as an added note, um, there was some discussion about, um, the two-and-a-half story issue, and so I did a little, do a little investigation into the building code, um, and found that, um, uh, a story above gray plane is, uh, any story that, um, its floor is entirely above the gray plane, which is an average of the site as it be. So anything below that would be considered base. So what we have is a basement and a first-floor crown. So brought the absurd of the code, um, for the next one that you were meaning of the problem.
Yeah, and I think it references fourth feet, right?
Uh, there's a reference to six feet, um, above the lowest point. The entire story has to be above this six-foot line, but I'm not sure that references or affects this project because the first door is, is, isn't even a story, it's a base.
Right.
Where it talks about.
Clearly, the whole year is below gray.
Right, exactly, so that, 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 for that basement floor, not the, you know, entirely above, not this way, then it could be about that.
Any questions, Catherine?
I mean, I don't think so, other than the fact that you're building up onto what's already been built in the non-conformity, there's no other increase in the non-conformity, right? You're just building straight up above what was already exist.
Let's see a window and door schedule.
The, we will be developing, um, construction drawings from these.
Those egress, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna make two motions.
The chair.
One for the special permit and one for the variance, so we can vote separately on each. Okay, great, okay. Are you, John?
Yes. I'm, I'm just wondering what she's doing for fun.
Not a lot, obviously.
Um, I move to close the public hearing and approve the application of Dana Shell for a special permit under sections five point three and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief is maybe necessary to add a second story on an existing residential structure which inadvertently encroached one foot into the front setback when it was originally constructed at Three Anthony Avenue, assessors map number thirty-two, lot number eighty, and District A, filed with the town clerk on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Based on a finding that the proposed project is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, the proposed second-floor addition to the structure will not be more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood which is located than the existing non-conforming structure, and the requirements and criteria under sections, section twelve point five point two of the zoning bylaw for the grant of a special permit have been met. Based on the condition that the addition is constructed in accordance with the following plans prepared by SV Design dated nine nineteen, twenty twenty-three. See one point zero proposed plot plan, X one point one, X one point two, X two point one, existing floor and roof plans and elevations. A one point oh, a one point one, a one point two, a one point three proposed floor and roof plans, a two point one, a two point two, a two point three proposed elevations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sean's second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
Yep.
Rob? Ryan? Catherine? Sean?
Okay.
And Sarah. I further move to approve the application of Dana Shell for a variance under sections five point three and twelve point three point three of the zoning bylaw, and/or other relief is maybe necessary to construct a deck which encroaches approximately ten feet into the side setback based on a finding, this is the only available location for a deck to the ledge proximate to the rear of the house owing to circumstances relating to the shape and topography of the land, especially affecting such land and structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and that the desirable relief may be granted with, without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this, the bylaw. Based on the condition, the deck is sited and constructed in accordance with the following plans prepared by SV Design dated nine nineteen, twenty twenty-one. See one point oh proposed plot plan and a one point one first-floor plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Catherine's seconds. Any discussion? Ready to vote? Rob?
Approved.
Ryan?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
And Sarah, please. My role. Does somebody want to write this?
Please just jump it all.
I have one outstanding. I'll review it.
I'll write it. Yeah. You wanna write it? Okay, I will.
You can't get a bad shift from here.
Like nothing. So, you're all set. Variance expires in one year after it's filed in the appeal period of, the special permit is now good for three years.
And there's a, a twenty-day appeal period for the variance, but not the special problems.
For both, for both, yeah. And, and once the decision is filed, the building inspector will issue a building permit if you want to proceed at your own risk, you know? Usually it takes you twenty days to keep going.
Right, thank you.
Oh, you can go ahead and say, good luck. Okay. Now we move to administrative matters.
Can't pick a building inspector up and finish.
We'll, we'll train them. Um.
You never had it so good.
Um, so now we'll move to administrative matters. We have the meeting minutes from August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. You'll prove. But people have a chance to take a look at those.
I wasn't here. And I promise.
My response that is, have we looked at it yet, Catherine?
I didn't look, but I discovered I wasn't here, so I stopped looking.
I see that.
Okay. We have only three.
Yeah, how are you gonna?
That's what we need. We need a majority. Sean was there. So are you okay with those minutes, Sean?
Yeah.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Brian's okay, okay. Those minutes are huge.
I appreciate you, yeah.
That's fantastic. It'd be efficient.
Gail, what's the status of decisions?
Two outstanding.
Four butlers mine.
What's mine again?
Twenty-three Old Neck Road.
Yeah.
You don't have minutes yet, Catherine, so blame me.
Okay, it's your fault. Thank you.
No problem.
Um, the other thing, uh, I wanted to bring to your attention is that we have a new set of bylaws dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Birthday.
Which I, they were approved by Attorney General on that date, which I printed off. Yep. Hundred and forty-six pages, um. Do people want me to send them the electronic copy, or do you want Gail to give you a hard copy?
Cause I'll make notes on it.
I like that.
All right.
Okay, hard copy. I'll just, I'll do the electronic.
Okay.
Oh, I prefer.
You're a Gail. Can you, can you make?
What about John Paneris?
Oh, yeah. Make, can you make three copies for these people, and then I'll check with John and Jim to see if they want, Jim will want a hard copy.
I'll be happy to make the copies.
Thank you so much.
Well, I have someone, I have, I have a senior write-off working with me.
Oh.
I know. And she knows how to run the machine.
Oh, good.
Um, the other thing I wanted to bring people, re- remind people of the site visit for the forty B on November eighth.
That's my five birthday, I can't.
Oh, it's not on my calendar. I'm sure it's when, wait a minute.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yeah. At ten o'clock. In the morning, I'm assuming, yeah.
We're doing it on Saturday, right?
No, this is for the forty B, SLB.
Oh, that's right.
The site visit with the, with the HAC.
Ah. Wear your hiking shoes.
If people want to attend.
Or the ticks will be dead by then.
ME, MECT is trying to bring a lot of people out to participate to show the state that it's important lands.
That people, yes, okay.
Yeah. Um, the other thing is for November, we have a rather busy schedule. We have four applications. We have Old Quarry Inc., AKA Cell Signaling, looking for variances with respect to height. Um, we have three Herald, which is a renovation additions. We have seventy-three Harbor, which is a unique situation where there's two lots next to each other. One has a house and one has a barn, which I think they've been using for parking, but they're in separate ownership. The one with the barn is three thousand nine hundred square feet lot in a ninety thousand square foot.
So, do they want to combine them?
They want to convert the barn to a second house, so. And then it's one sixty-eight Pine, where I think they're tearing down a house and building a new.
Are they really legitimately under separate ownership? Cause they merge as a matter of law.
Well, I think, I think we'll have to ask at the public hearing
Yeah.
for the history of the ownership.
Yeah, cause it may have merged.
Right, I agree.
As a matter of law.
Right. Over time.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll have to ask for that at, at the public hearing.
Anyway, what, when is the, is it supposed to be on the twenty-second?
No. It's the fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay.
The third Wednesday, which is really early.
At seven o'clock and going till apparently like midnight. Okay, great. We have so much on the agenda.
Um, what I plan to do.
I mean, I don't want it to go till midnight. I'm happy to have.
What I'm, what I plan to do is to limit members of the public to not speaking for more than two minutes. So this is. Well, speaking only once and for not more than two minutes.
What's the next application?
This is funny.
What about board members?
Yeah, talk for one or two minutes.
Our board members are not limited, but.
I'm giving Rob a hard time.
Other board members' job, thank you.
Other board members are limited.
Of members of other town boards that are here to just.
They would be speaking as a member of the public in the.
Captain, you have special town meeting on the thirteenth too, so you're gonna have to get a babysitter for two nights.
Yep.
Well, yeah.
We'll bring your kids here.
Or at bedtime or a special town meeting, it'll go great.
Okay, anything else?
What could go on?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Actionable point I've done tonight.
Why do we have a special town meeting on the thirteenth?